Good evening, and I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Please, please rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. First item up, presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. We have none this evening. We'll move on to response to public comment. I also understand there is none for that this evening. And we move on to item five, public comment. Anyone wishing to come before city council at this time may do so. Please state your name and address and your question or comment for council. Podium's open.
Sorry, I've never been in one of these before, so this is an experience. I do have a question, but it pertains to some of the...
State your name.
Paul Rogers.
And your address.
Thirty-three, ten, one hundred and forty-fourth Street.
And then your question or comment.
I'm curious to know if and when I can ask about adjustments to the street work in my neighborhood that is set to be discussed here.
So later this evening, item seven will be public hearings for that improvement project, and you can come up and speak during then.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will close public comment. We'll move on to item six, consent agenda. This evening, we have bill listings, minutes for the November fourth regular and work session meetings, the November fourteenth special meeting, comprehensive plan amendment proposed, proposing changes to the metropolitan urban service area boundaries, the Musa line, zoning ordinance text amendments to Title eleven and zoning map revisions, approvals for pre-application escort agreements for pre-engineering, work related to potential projects by MNLC and also by North Wind Test LLC, approval of the encroachment agreement with MNI Homes, the monument sign in easement, joint powers agreement embedded social worker, the donation acceptance for heroes and helpers, and the Dakota County CDA City of, City La Ha collaboration. Anyone wish to pull any items?
None for me.
All right. Seeing I would like to pull the donation and acceptance for heroes and helpers, so with six K pulled, someone like to move the consent agendas, items A through L with K removed for further comment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Tyson, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Weizenzell.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
And motion carries for zero. I pulled six K, pull that up here, donation chief, mainly for recognition of the amounts and the people and organizations involved. Could you speak to those, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So it's gonna be our ninth year doing Heroes and Helpers this year. It was formerly known as Shop with a Cop, and we were nice enough to bring the fire department on board, so it's now Heroes and Helpers. Had a name change a few years ago. So it's a good collaboration for Rosemont Public Safety. We have some Dakota County Sheriff's Office members that come with us as well. And the whole concept is utilizing leaders in our community to identify kids or families that might need a little bit of support over the holiday season and taking them out with us shopping. And they, it starts by raising some funds. So without really having to do much, I guess outreach on this, every year, American Legion, Rosemont Legion Post sixty-five comes forward, and they're pretty consistent with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation. So you see that reflected tonight in your packet, as well as another family came forward out of the blue, the Mack family at River Grove Heights, and they gave a thousand-dollar donation. So we're looking to accept those to help us start the process. Next Tuesday night, we are gonna be at Cub Foods bagging groceries. There's about fifteen of us that'll be over there for two hours, Tuesday, Tuesday night, three-thirty to five-thirty. You don't have to give donations, but we're gonna be there to bag your groceries, and any donations we do receive goes directly towards taking those, those kids shopping. So last year, we brought out, I wanna say it was thirty kids. I'm not, I don't have a final number for this year, but you can imagine a variety of sometimes pretty troubling things that they've been through, and they've been identified by school leaders or church leaders or perhaps police officers that have been on calls. And it's just, it's a great experience. You go in there, they each get an allotment, they're fed the evening, we transport them, good conversation, mentorship, building relationships, and then they get to buy presents for themselves and their families. So it's another great event.
Great for our community.
Absolutely.
So with that, thank you. And I'll move to approve the acceptance and expenditure of twenty-five-hundred dollars from American Legion Post sixty-five and one thousand dollars from Lyle and Cynthia Mack to be used for Heroes and Helpers program.
Second.
Motion by Weizenzell, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Weizenzell.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
And that completes item six K four-zero, approved. That completes six. We'll move on to seven, public hearings. The first item up is public improvement hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five street improvement project, city project two thousand and twenty-five zero-two. With that, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as usual, and you've probably seen some of these once or twice. Have a quick presentation on our street project for next year. There's a couple of slides I'll go through very quickly. We will post the presentation to the website tomorrow, so that way anybody who wasn't able to, to be here tonight, who didn't see it on the cable channel, or wants to just take another view of it, is, it will be available for everyone. So just a quick overview, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go past a couple of slides quickly, but I'll stop on some of the other more important ones. So project area is just really right across Highway three, near the elementary school and the middle school area, and then, of course, just south of the high school. So one forty-fourth, one forty-third, and Upper one forty-third, as well as Chili, Cantada, Canada, and Cameo. And then I should, sorry, I'll jump back to, we're looking at the pedestrian areas where Canada and Cameo come into one hundred and forty-fifth Street. Just wanted to call those out because we're gonna redo the bumpouts in those areas, make it a little easier for staff. So again, improvement hearing, part of the process required by state statute, an opportunity for the public to comment on the project's scope and planned work. A separate assessment hearing will be held in the spring after the contract is awarded for construction, should we get to that point. And then ultimately, the goal for tonight is a council resolution ordering the project. I'm gonna jump over this real quick, because I go into a little more detail, but it's street and surface work and utility work. So we'll be doing roughly the same type of work that we did this year with street reclamation. So that will be grinding up the existing asphalt, which is in poor condition, mix that with the new road base, it'll be reshaped and then repaved. We'll repair any curb and gutter that, that's holding water, is broken, in poor condition, that kind of thing. Also look at those pedestrian ramps that are, that don't meet the current ADA standards, those will be replaced as well. And let's see, then I did mention the sidewalk improvements on one hundred and forty-fifth Street. Right now, those, there's a little bit of a challenge with, with some of the snow plowing and just how those, those curves are shaped in there. So we're gonna improve that. We'll reinstall any of the existing pedestrian signage that's in place. And then I just, I do wanna call out that this is not going to be assessed as part of the project. So any of that, any of that work will be bid as part of the overall project, but we've kept it in a separate schedule, so we can track those costs separately.
Can, sorry, I have one question. Can you go back to that in the last slide?
Sure.
So sorry, just, so those bumpouts in those two, on, off Canada Avenue and Cameo, those are, those are going away?
No, they'll, they'll be, they'll just gonna be reconstructed. Because of how the, the geometry is there, it's, it gets to be a little challenging with the snow plows.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
You know, they're, so we're gonna increase the taper a little bit, make it a little bit easier for the, for the plows. So I know there's a couple locations that almost every year, the crew is out there trying to repair the curb, and so they're, they're getting, they're getting tired of doing that. They have other better things to do.
Sure.
As far as utility work, we'll be replacing some of the valves, the hydrants will be replaced. We're also gonna install two additional hydrants. One will be on one forty-third Street and then Upper one forty-third Street. There's, those blocks are rather long without a hydrant in the middle, so that'll, that'll be helpful for, you know, in the, in the event that there's a fire need there. So hopefully, they are never used except for flushing. And then the other thing that we're doing that's a little bit, in addition to some of the work that we've done in the past, we are gonna line the existing sanitary sewer that, those lines in, as you'll note, on Chili, one forty-third, Upper one forty-third, and one forty-fourth are older lines. So what we can do is, without having to dig up the entire street, they'll pull a liner through there, and then eventually, what happens is they come back through, right after that, they cut the openings for the services that go to each particular home. We're also looking at the potential for some, perhaps some lining, at least three or four feet, maybe five feet up the sum of those services, just depending on what condition they're in. So again, pretty standard what to expect, you know, large equipment, uneven surfaces, some weather delays, it's gonna be, it'll be like a gravel road for the most part, for, for part of that time. The residents will be able to access their homes, so it doesn't stop them. There will be periods of time where they, they may not be able to get in or out of their driveway in particular, but generally, it's all done under traffic. The, so you'll see here is the estimated cost and the funding sources. Again, generally, the largest cost is that street portion. There's some, like you see, the, the water. And then sanitary is another large portion of that, which is the lining, which we haven't done in the past here at this point, but this is, I've used it in other cities I've worked in, and it's, it's a very good, you know, it's, it's been around for quite a while, so it adds a lot, you know, a lot of life to that sewer, so. And then, of course, it's funded, funds are from the utility funds and then our street capital fund. And then the last one are the proposed assessments. Again, that will be adjusted and will be based on what the contract award cost is. So right now, we're using the engineer's estimate for that number, and it works out to thirty-five percent of the surface cost for the project, again, accepting the, the crosswalks on one forty-fifth Street. And then, like I mentioned earlier, we'll be doing a separate assessment hearing after that construction award. The estimated assessments for single-family are about forty-five-hundred per parcel. We do a per parcel assessment there, and then there's a couple other ones. There's some commercial and industrial, and then one multifamily property in that area. So like I said, it doesn't include the bumpouts, and the assessment rate is, is ten years, so. But again, we'll go, there'll be more detail available in the future with that. And finally, just the, the schedule, as you'll note, we're, I have the, the nineteenth of November highlighted here, just showing where we're at at this point. So the next step that we'll be going forward is early February, where we would open bids. So the next time on our schedule that we would be back with anything on this project is planned to be with the second meeting in February. And with that, there's contacts. Again, Larry Poplar is the, he's the design engineer and project manager on this from TKDA, and of course, I haven't, I haven't received a substantial number of phone calls. We did have a public hearing, or, excuse me, a public meeting, this is the public hearing. We had a public meeting in September with about sixteen or eighteen residents that showed up, and we had direct one-on-one conversations with those people. Lot of good questions, kinda gave them an overall view of the scope, so they were, they were able to look at, we had a very preliminary draft plan set on that, and we just asked them, you know, any concerns in particular they might have. So we were able to, we'll be able to address those. And with that, just plugging last year, or this year's project, I should say, so this is a, a view from the south looking towards the north, you can see the, the Cub Foods right at the top of the photo, but generally, it's, it's, that's about two-thirds or three-quarters of the, the entire project from this year, so.
This is cool, and this is, this is nice just to see the completed. We always see what it looks like beforehand and why we're doing it, and then, but this is a cool aerial shot. Thanks.
Yeah, that, we have, we have a drone pilot in the, you know, up in the biaz here, so. We're able, we're able to get those photos pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
They're not great.
So with that, I would, the, so the next steps from here, Mr. Mayor, would be to open the public, or the, yeah, the public improvement hearing and, and hear from members of the public.
First, I'll look to council, any other questions or comments?
Very thorough.
Yeah, one, one question is, I know with it happening next summer, the issue with the highway, Highway three and the roundabout going to the school, because it's coming both directions?
Yes.
And I know, I think you're, you mentioned you're coordinating with the school district to plan that. How do you see that rolling out? Because, so for those individuals that are, there's still activities at the high school.
Yes.
How, how, how are they gonna be able to get there?
Yeah, well, so the Highway three entrance will be closed the whole summer, and that's, thank you for mentioning that. I know you caught me a few moments ago, and I meant to bring that up. But we'll have a coordination meeting on Monday with the school district, their architect, engineer, their construction manager, and then our designer, our design engineer as well. And the plan is, they would, they would still be able to enter into the school, for the public at least, from Chili Avenue. So you'll, there will be a detour on Highway three, but you can come in through Chili. You know, we're gonna, we will have that written as part of our scheduling for the contractor, that, you know, how, how they can get in there. The other, the other piece, of course, is one forty-third, where that is by the middle school. So we'll, we'll have to, you know, coordinate that as well. So those are the two items that we need to get coordinated. They've got, they've proposed, and I should, I should say, the school district has proposed an entrance for their contractor to come in off of, near the middle school. So they would go a little bit further up Highway three, past one forty-third Street, and then be able to enter construction from that way. They likely will have to get some of their truck traffic up Chili, so, you know, at this point, we would look to have Chili, it may potentially start before school is over just to get ahead of some of that, that timeframe.
Yeah, because I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure the school district is gonna wanna obviously have access to the high school.
Yes.
There's still, activities don't stop, so in the summer, they're just as, just as busy as during school district.
That's correct.
School, school, the school's on.
But they also are bringing, isn't, don't they start construction on their new activities center too? So they're gonna have some big trucks that are gonna need to get in there.
Yes, and that's, that's one of the things that we're trying to coordinate as well, and so they're...
So school too, but...
Yeah, so they're, I think their contractor, their construction entrance will be from that, from the parking lot just north of one hundred and forty-third Street and kinda down across the ball fields.
The old ball fields, yeah.
As they come through there, so.
Okay.
That's, that's the initial planning look at that.
With this, though, there's gonna be a lot of traffic, yeah?
Yes.
Lot of traffic in that area. Other questions?
Nope.
All right, then we will move to a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to council regarding this two thousand and twenty-five street improvement project, two thousand and twenty-five zero-two? May do so at this time. Come forward to the podium, state your name and address and your comment or question. Podium is open.
Name's Tom Steinle, I have three-one-nine-five, one forty-fifth Street West in Rosemont. I'm very familiar with the bumpout, because I live right on that corner. Many times, I've called down and talked to Public Works or whatever about, you know, the plowing of that, because I've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight, ever since they put that bumpout in, I never had a problem clearing my mailbox, because the snowplow comes right by there, you know, and pushes the snow right like everybody else's. But with that bumpout, like you were, you was talking about, it's got that little curve in there.
Yeah.
You know, so the plow can't really hug that very well. So what does Tom get to do? I get to plow that extra snow that's out there in the street, all the way from my mailbox, you know, so.
Right.
So that's, that would be nice to see that kinda eliminated, not eliminated, but I understand the need for the bumpout. But what I've found too, living there for all these years, is that a lot of the people don't come down to that little, that little push-button little thing there, you know, to cross in the middle of the bumpout. A lot of people are still kinda right at the corner and cross over. So I don't know why the bumpout just couldn't be a bumpout to keep the traffic, you know, if that's what it's for.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it'll slow down the traffic, so they can't pass anybody for the school kids. So I could see just having the crosswalk at the corners, rather than having them walk down, because like I say, I see a lot of kids just walking across. So I just, I got something for food for thought, anyway.
Sure.
And plus, it might straighten my little, you know, snow removal out a little bit. And that's, I suppose that's not really gonna affect Leprechaun days, is it?
Excuse me?
So much the construction going on with the one forty-fourth and one fifty, you know, one forty-fifth Street?
It could.
It could.
Yeah.
Scheduling of that will be taken into consideration, I imagine.
Yes.
But it's a good point to bring up.
Sure. And then I noticed on pricing, it's like forty-five, sixty-two for a single family, so there's all, there's like three people, three, three of us that live on that street. And we're, you know, Ombre just retired, so we're three people that are retired now on that street. So I'm gonna be charged like almost forty-six hundred dollars for assessment. Now, I don't mind paying taxes, you know, that's, that's just part of, part of the deal. But with the school, now that they've had their new little parking spot up there, you know, the new bus corral type thing, I have a hundred and twenty buses that come past my house every day. They go up for the middle school to drop off, they leave, and then they come back and pick up and come back again, you know, so I took a picture today, just to show you if you really wanted to see it, but from my stop sign all the way back to the middle school, you know, school buses. So I think that the school district could pick up my forty-five-hundred bucks. I don't, I could, I could see, that's a lot of traffic on that road. You know, for us people that just live there and go up and get groceries once a week, or maybe, you know, drive on that road, let's say, a couple times a day, but if you got a hundred and sixty school buses going up and down that road every day, a hundred and eighty days a year for school, well, I think they can kinda cover some of that assessment too. That's just food for thought.
Yeah.
Okay? So I think that was about it for me. But as far as one forty-fifth goes, they're gonna, basically just gonna be digging up that then and putting down a new tire on that then?
One forty-fifth will only see...
I mean, Canada, sorry.
On Canada, yes. Yep, that'll, they'll rob there, they'll reclaim the pavement, and then it'll get repaved. Any curb or concrete work that needs to get completed will be done as part of that, too.
And what would be the possibility of fudging a little money to put in new steps on Charlie's Park right there, written behind my property?
That's the first I've heard of that.
Well, the thing is, that has been, if you go look at it, the city does, you know, the city council wants to take a look at it too. Evidently, the city doesn't have money to replace those steps. It's been that way for like twenty-five years. I brought it up a couple different times, and I, they were gonna have Boy Scouts do it, they were gonna have this person do it. I could prob, they said I could even do it if I wanted to. But it's like, they're, they're made out of wood little timbers, and they're all pretty deteriorated and everything like that, so it would be nice to kinda dress that up. I'm surprised that the city workers and other people haven't said anything about it, but...
Can you, can you, can you show on the, the map what, what exactly you're talking about? I'm not following where these steps are located.
It would be on one forty-fifth Street, and they got little Charlie's Park in the backyard there, in my backyard.
Also the tennis courts?
Right, where they, I think where the tennis courts are, but...
Do you need, do you need the steps?
You can use, well, a lot of the kids do, yeah, a lot of kids, you cut, cut that corner, you know, by the park and go up and cross over, yeah. I guess they wouldn't need it. If it wasn't there, they'd walk the sidewalk around, you know, but that steps has kinda been there since I lived there. I don't know if you can see it at all, or were you looking?
I can see the tennis courts, where the...
It'd be on the southeast, southwest corner of Charlie's Park.
This area, sir.
Okay.
Right, it's right on the very corner.
Okay.
Right in the very corner of my backyard.
Sure.
So that'd be nice, we could get that dressed up a little bit, you know, it's been that way for as long as I've lived there. I think at one time, somebody told me they were thinking about doing some landscaping thing, pavings along the whole stretch there at one time, maybe, I don't know if that would just, you know, whatever, but, yeah, so that should be it. I think this, my concern, just that little bumpout, I think it's needed, that'd be nice to see if there's, you know, more in the corner for crossing and still have the safety factor. And then as far as the single-family costs, like I said, I don't mind paying my taxes, you know, I, but I could see, you know, the school district, with all the traffic and the buses traveling on that every day for a hundred and eighty days, that's a lot of traffic on that road. So I think we could kinda maybe see a little money getting put that way, too, help us, help us, our three residents on that, on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? He beat you.
Yeah, I like your idea about the shared cost there. That's good. All right, let's see, shared cost.
You got two more.
Yeah, I'll put that in the suggestion bucket. Uh, let's see if I get this right. Paul Rogers, thirty-three, ten, one hundred and forty-fourth Street. Am I missing anything? Those are the two things I was supposed to say.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, we're good. Uh, so I'm here mainly to kinda advocate for some more signage. Long story short, with the high school and the parents and everybody right there with the schools, there's a lot of traffic, and no joke, some of the high school kids are just ripping through that neighborhood, trying to get to the front of the line at the, here, I'll use the arrow, right up here, right? This is kinda the choke point. So they'll come right around and go really fast. And frankly speaking, your parents as well are moving pretty quick, and, and buses at times are. And I have in the past brought it up, as in called into the police station and just asked, you know, for maybe some patrols or whatever to be there to kinda pump the brakes, no pun intended, on some of that behavior. And I've also called into or emailed and did get a written response, and I apologize, I don't know the, the group, but I asked for some signage, just to say, slow down. Actually, I, what I suggested was, is just any kind of post that I can buy signs for that says, you know, kids playing, so that just gives a little bit more of an indication to slow down, because the, the sign that says like end school zone or whatever is in front of the, the church, and it just, basically, I'm here just because cars are ripping down the street, not all the time, every time, but enough for me to say, hey, And it just, basically, I'm here just because cars are ripping down the street, not all the time, every time, but enough for me to say, hey, is it, if we can add some signs there or do something, or put that in the thought process, I'd be super grateful for it. Uh, and yeah, especially with the roundabout, like there's gonna be, especially during construction, an extra presence there, uh, I'd be grateful for that, because I didn't want anything bad to happen, so, appreciate it.
And the start of school, end of school?
What's that?
Start of school and end of school timeframe?
Exactly, yeah.
We could, we could get a present out.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't know if it matters, I don't care, uh, but a lot of the high school kids are starting to park up in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So for whatever that's worth, again, I do not care.
We're aware.
Um, the only thing, parts of annoying is when they park like right on the end of my driveway, but now I sound like a curmudgeon, so... All right, thank you.
You're good, appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to come forward?
My name is David Sullivan, I'm at 3380 Upper 143rd Street, and this is my first time ever being at one of these. I just kind of came, first time I heard about it. Um, first, I just come to find out what I'd be, oh, my part on this street project would be and how that works. Like, I don't know about assessment, or is this something that we pay overtime, or we gotta one chunk out at a time, or...
So there's, um, when the final assessment, which, what was the date on that? February, February the assessment hearing occurs?
Uh, that's when the contract...
Contract.
We would, so we would call a, call a meeting, so it'd be in March.
Okay, so, so between now and then, what, the action that council's taking tonight is to order up the construction drawings so that they can go out, design, and then get pricing back. Pricing comes back, that's presented to us in February, and then March, the assessment. So they'll take those numbers, and those will be the numbers that, um, are quote, "real." And then there will be options made available that you can pay in lump sum, or I believe it's over a 10-year period, if you wanted to do that. Uh, I don't know if there's any other options, no, it's, it's pretty much lump sum, straight up, or over a 10-year period, um, that you would pay the city back.
Okay. I, and I agree with them about the traffic, kind of crazy at times, but thank you.
We hear a lot about traffic. I did, uh...
I got one more, sorry. One more thought, quick thought, only because it happened to someone else that I know, is that when you do the sewer lining stuff, um, what, if any, uh, help or assistance is there if the, the pipes from the house to the main get damaged or cracked in any way? And the reason being is that, I mean, the houses are in, what, 1950s, I think, or mine is at least. And the, the sewage pipes are clay. So I'd be curious to know, any thoughts or feedback on, I don't know, assistance if something happens, you know, within a certain time period after, uh, the construction? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Do you want to talk about home warranty line?
I can, a little bit, I know you're also pretty versed in it, Mayor. Uh, there, there is private insurance policies homeowners can purchase to protect against backups or service line failures. Um, it's just a third-party policy, not, I think some homeowners, comp, insurance companies also offer that kind of coverage, but there's one, um, that we are aware of that kind of promotes information through the city. Uh, now I'm gonna draw a blank on the name of it.
Well, it's, it's the National League of Cities, and because of the large that they are able to do, so they have a large pool that they're able to...
Insurance.
Essentially, it's an insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
And by doing that, um, we have residents that do utilize that po, policy, particularly in the older areas.
Yep.
And we've had, uh, already, they've experienced claims against it, so it's not just paying in, they've actually had claims, so...
But, but is your question regarding if something would happen during the project?
Either during the project or some grace period, let's say, after the projects, when things settle. Because if you're doing some kind of liner in the main line or up into residential, like up into my line per se, and, I don't know, winter comes, right, and there's, I don't know if settling's the right word, but I don't know. Some kind of grace period, like, hey, we just had this worked on less than six months or a year, right, and now my line's broken? That, that's my train of thought. So that's good to know that I can buy insurance.
Yeah.
But...
The city would not come onto your property to fix that. Uh, you're responsible from, from the house basically out to the city's connection point.
Out to the pipe, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but if you're, if you're doing something to the main line that adjusts or, you know, messes with my line, that's, that's my concern and my thought processes, is there, is that part of the consideration?
It would be a lot harder to prove that, if, particularly if it was farther up the line, or if you had settlement or something like that. Um, not that I have anything to do with the insurance, but, uh, some residents have found that to be a, uh, effective tool uh, to mitigate that risk.
So if I'm hearing correctly, and not in a bad way, but for clarification, I can buy insurance, but there's nothing, uh, part of this project or the planning or, or afterwards that would cover that type of thing?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then has that, do you have, has that happened in other repayment things, or areas?
That sort of thing would be extremely rare. What I just wanted to add would be that any type of damage that a homeowner might sustain to their property that's close in time to a project, it still turns into a insurance investigation type of process. There's no, uh, immediate determination that, yes, the cause of it was the construction versus possible other underlying factors that may have been in place before the project began.
Understood.
You know, something hanging by a thread and but for...
You mean my 1950s pipe, just like, yeah, I got you, yeah, yeah.
It's, you're the sole user and beneficiary, you're the service line, that sort of thing all plays into it. But from time to time, uh, we do have backups and things that have happened, and, uh, our insurance entity always gets involved in mediating those to resolution. So it's, it's hard for us to sit here and say, yeah, if your service breaks...
You're covered, don't worry about it, okay.
...we're guaranteed to be at fault over it, it's just much more complicated than that.
Okay. All right, thank you, or did you want to say?
He asked my question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, did want, uh, police chief, could you speak to the parking issue that's going on around that area? I think we took some action about, uh, parking permits and things, and how does that affect this area right now that we've got...
Sure. Off the top of my head, and I hope I don't misspeak, so Public Works Director Edgar, please help me out on this one. Uh, but we did send out letters to every resident, as well as we signed 143rd, uh, Quintada, and Upper 143rd. Uh, so those, that entire block section, I guess it would be the, the northern half, the northern block, is signed, no parking, um, uh, without permits during school hours. So, and that is to try to alleviate some of the overflow parking that's come up from, um, the high school being as big as it is, and some of the stuff that's going on to, um, it's, it's a, it's a tough balance, because you have students that are attempting to drive to school, and there's not enough parking, and there's a little bit of overflow, it tends to get worse in the spring when we get more licensed drivers. You get some of, some of the sophomores that are starting to pick up, uh, driving. So we are trying to encourage rideshare, carpooling, um, we're talking to the district, and we're gonna see, um, what the spring brings, so...
I think, thank you.
You're good.
I think the only other question I heard, uh, maybe, Mr. Erickson, if you can speak to, um, uh, school, the, school district being assessed, or certainly the church there also is another property?
And they are, they are a part of the assessment role.
Okay.
They have, uh, sorry for the quick scroll through, uh, you'll, there's three different types of properties on the, on the project. So you see the ones with the red outline, again, single-family parcels. The yellow would be the school district, and I believe the park is shown in there, and then commercial as well, so those are the yellow ones. And then the blue is the multifamily, which is, uh, I believe the Rosemount on the corner there, so...
So they are paying?
They, yes, they have a portion of the assessments as well, yes.
Okay. All right, anyone else wishing to come before council? Going once? Twice? Yes?
Could I put a toe on my street there for the buses?
All right.
To help with my taxation.
I think you'll only get away with that if you had a lot of Illinois people driving through. Um, and three, so I'll move to close the public hearing, for a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The hearing is closed. Any other questions or comments back to staff? Seeing none, uh, anyone like to move the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution ordering the 2025 Street Improvement Project, City Project 2025-02, and authorizing final preparation of plans and specifications, and authorizing advertisement for bids.
I'll second.
Motion by Essler, second by Freski, roll please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Weizensohl?
Aye.
That, uh, completes the public hearing for zero. Uh, with the comments taken back by staff, we'll see if they, how those will be addressed, or they'll be added to the comments already received, and, uh, we'll be informed what, uh, comes of those. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number eight, unfinished business, which we have done this evening. New business, request by Devco Preservation LLC for approval of a final plan and minor amendment to the Emerald Isle PUD agreement. Uh, let's see what we got here. All right. Mr. Nemchek?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Uh, this is a second and final step in the approval process for a proposed project by, uh, Devco, um, to produce, to construct 192, uh, units in two, uh, multifamily buildings here in Rosemount. A little bit of a summary of the project, as I said, it's 192 units in two buildings, and the site itself, um, is designated in the city's comprehensive plan for high-density residential. Uh, the city's comprehensive plan was amended, uh, in 2020 with the, uh, Emerald Isle Planned Unit Development, uh, approval. Uh, it was, uh, um, the comp plan designation was amended, and the site was rezoned, uh, for, uh, this proposed use. The site generally conforms with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, except for one provision, uh, related to a required additional 10-foot setback from Conamara, uh, trail due to that road's status as a collector. Additional requirement, uh, for approval is the conversion of the existing outlot. Uh, the, the subject parcel was platted as an outlot as part of the Emerald Isle Second Edition, uh, back in 2020. Uh, the applicant is proposing a final plat that would, uh, convert that outlot into a buildable lot. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and, uh, approved it at its meeting on October 22nd, uh, subject to, uh, two condition, among other conditions, two conditions, uh, related to the 10-foot setback from Conamara Trail and the creation of a buildable parcel. Those two actions are before the council this evening. The site is, um, just under a half a mile east of Akron Avenue, and it's about 10 acres in size. It's, uh, shown there with a star, uh, just between County Road 42 and Conamara Trail, immediately east of Dakota County Technical College's, uh, property, uh, which is also the site of the old city hall. So here's the site plan, uh, showing the two buildings configured, uh, one in the north and northwest, and then, uh, one on the east side. The site will, uh, make use of surface parking to meet the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, just note that there is a significant site constraint, uh, in the form of a gas line, uh, bisecting the site at a, at an angle there. Um, no building or, um, structures or parking can be placed upon that. The applicant is making use of the area south of that gas line easement for additional overflow parking, as well as some, uh, uh, resident amenities. Uh, stormwater will also be managed in that area as well. The building will be a mix of three, uh, one, two, and three-bedroom units. The general layout is pretty consistent between the two buildings, the three-bedroom units are on the corners. Uh, this carries over to the other building as well, although I'm only showing this first floor of the, of the north, uh, building A. Uh, this building will also contain the community amenities, such as a community room, fitness center, uh, leasing offices. Uh, those, uh, amenities will not be located in the other building. And as you go up, those spaces are replaced with, uh, units. So here's some exterior elevations of those buildings. They differ slightly from the more recent multifamily projects that have come through, uh, particularly with the, um, hipped roof and gables. It's a little more complimentary to the existing residential neighborhood immediately to the north. Uh, the units will have balconies, and the exterior is comprised of a board and batten and lap siding, which again is also, uh, complimentary, uh, and similar to the existing residential neighborhood immediately to the north. Uh, the applicant's landscape plan, I just want to touch on briefly, this is a preliminary plan. Uh, it has, uh, a lot of trees on it, those will be winnowed down a little bit while still meeting the requirements of the code, uh, just to show that, uh, while the applicant is requesting a deviation through the planned unit development process to eliminate the additional 10-foot setback requirement, uh, in the code, uh, they are able to provide some additional landscaping in the area between the property boundary and the building. Uh, the code does require that 10-foot area to allow for earthen berms, buffer yards, or planting strips. Uh, staff finds that that intent of the ordinance is met without the additional 10-foot setback. Uh, the Planning Commission was supportive of this, uh, minor amendment to allow for that, um, deviation of the code. Here is the proposed plat, uh, it was originally an outlot, um, Outlet B of, uh, Emerald Isle. Uh, it would be replatted into, uh, Lot 1, Block 1, Emerald Isle Fourth Edition. This plat has gone through the county's plat commission review. Uh, any required easements and, um, right-of-way have already been dedicated prior, uh, so no changes to this are required by the county. That is about it, there's three actions, uh, being recommended by staff. And that is the first one, to adopt a resolution approving the final plat. And then, uh, the second and third are related, the first to, uh, a resolution approving the minor amendment to the PUD, and then, uh, also authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute that, uh, agreement. Happy to take any questions, I know the applicant is, uh, present who can speak to some of the operational aspects of the project as well.
Open up the council questions.
I have a couple. Um, we have a lot of apartment buildings that are currently under construction, I think one of them just recently opened to renters. Can you speak a little bit about, to the need of apartments? Because I think many people are kind of like, let's take a pause, let's fill them before we build more. And then my second question is, are these market-rate apartments or something different?
Sure. So, um, I can't speak to the specific need question, other than the fact that when, uh, developers do come forward, and I would certainly defer to the applicant on how they decided that Rosemount is still a good place to build an apartment project, given the, uh, number of apartments that have been built. Um, there is a, uh, a, a process that a lot of developers go through, market studies, uh, to see what the demand is, what the, um, vacancy rate is in other areas, not just in Rosemount, but, but near, nearby communities. Um, so being a kind of market-driven community, and, and, uh, the market is ultimately what decides what gets built where within the confines of the city's comprehensive plan and zoning code, um, I would defer to the applicant to speak to that specifically. Uh, I would also, um, let them answer your second question about if it's a, a market rate or otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Before we call up the, uh, developer, any questions for staff from either?
Nope.
All right, then the applicant can come forward. Welcome.
Council members. My name's Nick Storley, 751 Second Street, Northeast, Hopkins, Minnesota. Uh, so to answer your first question about the demand for the, uh, apartment community, we do order the third-party market studies, Anthony is completely correct on that, and they take into account the pipeline for the city. So the additional apartment communities that are around the community, they are already looking at. are around the community, they're already looking at, and there's ample demand for people wanting to move to Rosemount.
Okay.
And so that's how we came up with the unit count and then the demand for one, two, and three bedrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
And then for your second question, it was about the...
Are they market-rate?
Yeah. So this is an affordable housing community, and it'll be of varying income levels. Well, one's at 30% of the area median income, 50, 60, and 70% of the area median income. And then the rents will differ, and then also based off of family sizes as well, the rents can be different. But those rents are set by HUD.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you, could you give us an idea of like some of the various income levels for those? Was it like 80%, 60%? Could you walk through a couple of those?
Yep, definitely. Yeah, so the area median income for the Minneapolis-St. Paul area is $124,000, I believe, for 2024. So it'd be 60% of that or 50% depending on, you know, which level you qualify for. So 50%, that'd be $62,000 that you would need to make. And then your rent's adjusted to be at 30% of that income is what you'd be paying on a monthly basis.
Any other questions? All righty. Thank you very much.
If I may, also, Mayor, just on that conversation about the need for apartments here, this is, as of right now, the last piece of land that is guided and zoned for this high-density residential development. While staff has been supportive of the number of rooftops being created by this type of development, it is important to note that we are also very interested in seeing commercial development, and the hope being that, you know, with more residential development and more people living nearby, that can drive that commercial development. But agreed that we need to also let that have a chance to bake as well.
Go ahead.
Just one more, one more comment, I guess. That parcel has been advertised for a pretty extensive period of time, like two years at least, and it's been listed on, I mean...
Since 2020.
2020. So it's been, it's, I mean...
There's been signs out for...
There's been signs out there. So anybody who's living immediately north of there shouldn't be surprised that there's an apartment development going in just on that parcel. I mean, is that fair, fair assessment? I mean, the sign's been there for four years advertising.
Yeah, certainly.
Development for apartments.
I mean, it never fails to surprise me what, what people can miss, but...
Yep. But it's just a data point. It's just a data point.
Not everyone will drive by where that sign exactly is, but yeah, it has been guided and zoned that since before the first house was built in Emerald Isle.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
All righty. Any other, any other questions for staff?
Sorry. So one more, one more comment. I think it's important to also point out that, you know, when you call it workforce housing, subsidized housing, whatever you want to call it, I think it's important for residents to understand that the reason, I think in addition to getting more people, will help generate more, more demand for developers who are going to come in and plant commercial, you know, restaurants, retail. It's also important to point, point out that those, all those restaurants and retail, they need workers, and they, those workers earn wages that generally couldn't normally be afforded in some of the, in some of the residents, some of the residential development we have in Rosemount currently. So it's important to point that out, that not only is it going to bring more people to be patrons to those businesses, but we also need individuals to have a place to live where we're going to work in those businesses. So I think that's, that's an important data point for residents to understand the reason why. Because transparently, this will be the third development in that corner that is, you know, it's workforce housing. There's one on the south side of 42, there's one on the north side of Conamara, and now this will be the third.
Correct.
So I just think it's important for those, you know, for those residents who raise concerns that, hey, why are we doing all this workforce housing? I think it's just important to remind them that we, they need a place to live, an affordable place to live.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not just those workers either. We've been, staff has heard this from other employers from the community. Since I've been working here at the city in our business park, the, the, the people that they're looking to hire need places to work.
Yep.
And, you know, it's hard to get here from, yes, to live. It's hard to get here from, you know, St. Paul and Minneapolis to work, you know?
Or Plymouth.
Just with the distance.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Or Plymouth. All right. Anything else? All right. We'd like to move the recommended actions. There are three motions taken separately.
I can take the first one. Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Emerald Isle Fourth Edition final plat, subject to conditions.
Second. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Wysensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Second motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a minor amendment to the Emerald Isle Planned Unit Development Agreement.
Second. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Wysensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Third motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the minor amendment to the Emerald Isle's Planned Unit Development Agreement.
Second. Roll, please.
Wysensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
All three motions approved four zero, and that completes new business item number nine, A. All right, that. We'll move on to 10 announcements, city staff updates. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I think Chief Dulstrom sent me a note. He's got a cleanup he wanted to do quick, so I can throw it to him.
My apologies, Mayor, members of the council. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this with the donation from the Mack family. So Lyle Mack actually passed away in June of this year, and this is part of a legacy gift that he wanted to pass along. So he joined the Navy in 1969. He became a Dakota County Deputy in 1976, I want to say, and retired there from 2002. So he had some complications with a brain tumor this year, which led to him passing away. In lieu of flowers, they did a memorial, and he donated a chunk of money to the Hastings Toy Drive, and then also to the Heroes and Helpers here in Rosemont because some of those Dakota County deputies helped. So I believe his wife, Cindy, is going to be helping us on the night of the event, but I just wanted to make sure that I added that. So my apologies earlier.
Awesome.
Thank you for sharing that.
And to add even deeper, Mayor, Lyle Mack served with my dad in the Dakota County Sheriff's Department, and so he would have seen me as like a little tyke running around the Dakota County Sheriff's Department. So small, small world with the, and yeah, he, good, good guy. So yeah, Heroes and Helpers, awesome event. It reminds us also that the Santa tour is coming. We've heard that Santa is interested in coming back to Rosemount. So don't have a date to announce yet. We're, Santa's a busy man. We're trying to get on his calendar, but the Santa tour will happen, and so folks can get ready for that. Usually it's, it'll be one of the first two weekends of, first two Saturdays of December. We're just not sure which exact Saturday it is quite yet. And then the mayor had caught me beforehand about a consent agenda item that he did not choose to pull, but I can call out as the embedded social worker JPA. I won't call the chief up again. He's had enough running back and forth. But just a cool program that we re-upped here again tonight, a partnership that we have got, the embedded social worker in our police department. Been a wonderful relationship for us in Dakota County to have a social worker on hand to deal with, you know, instances that are maybe just a bit out of the day-to-day purview or what we would expect officers to need to do on a day-to-day basis. So mental health calls, crisis, crisis events, where folks can spend more time with victims and victims' families as they, as they work through the criminal justice system or avoid the criminal justice system as needed. So beyond that, Mayor, I think that's all that I had.
All right. Any comments or questions, announcements from city council?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll move on to our calendar. This week in Rosemount, we have the Youth Commission meeting tomorrow from 3:45 to 4:45. They'll be touring the new police and public works facility led by Mr. Egger. The Utility Commission is November 25th from 5:30 to 6:30. Here at City Hall, Parks and Rec will meet on November 25th from 7 to 8, also here at City Hall. The next Planning Commission will be November 26, 6:30 to 7:30 at City Hall. And then November 28th, to celebrate Thanksgiving, the City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday, the 29th. We will be having the annual tree lighting event November 30th from 6 to 7 p.m., sponsored by Rack and helped with our youth commissioners. Tree lighting, live music, cookies, juice. Santa will be there, as I understand it. The next city council work session will be on December 3, 2024, from 5 to 7 p.m., and followed by the city council meeting at 7 to 8 p.m. You have a Santa tour date here. Is this the real date?
I don't know if it's confirmed yet, is it? I don't think so.
Is this the Santa date?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the date I'm showing.
Yep.
I can confirm that, yes.
All right, so...
Late breaking news.
Yeah. Between the chief and the mayor here, we've got the date.
All right, I'll stop talking. Have a great night.
December 14, 2024, starting at 10 o'clock and running through 2, winding its way through the city of Rosemount. Santa tour. All righty, that, save that date. Santa Claus is coming to Rosemount, teaming up with the Rosemount Fire and Police for another tour around the city. So tell the kids to be good, for goodness sakes. We will have two timed routes, so Santa will be able to see as many residents as possible. Watch for the timestamp map coming soon to see when Santa will arrive in your neighborhood. That'll be on our website, correct?
Yeah, that's December 14th, Mayor.
December 14th.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to make sure you knew the date. Yeah, thank you.
Just following up on that. All right. So with that, is there any other business to come before the city? Seeing none, I will move to adjourn.
I got it.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.